This government meeting is brought to you by Eastworks and our local cable subscribers.
Okay, I'm gonna start the meeting. All the government relations for May 2nd. Uh, I'll make a motion to prove the minutes for March 9th. That's what you said.
Second.
You have the minutes for March 2nd, alright.
No, I was seconding your motion.
I know, but I mean, we have the March 2nd.
Yes.
March 9th, any further discussion? Hearing none, all in favor? Aye, aye. Okay. Please send those to Barbara. There's no mayor here, public speaker is not here. I am gonna jump to the charter and then get to the council rule, okay? I'm gonna share my screen. And I'm gonna go to 210. Now, Barbara and I met with the city attorney. And what you see here in yellow are the changes he suggested. I had a version of this that did not have my original things, but... To refresh our memories, I don't know if you were here, Tom, on the mic. We decided to stay with 45 days. Because counselors, Denham and Counselor Gomez both felt that 60 days might give too much time for someone to find a reason to not appoint somebody.
Can I...
Go ahead.
...wording that better?
Please.
Um, it's not about trying to... You know, we have enough days to find something to re... The only problem that we have is to reject. And in the 45 days, you cannot find something why 15 extra days will change that. So in 45 days, we're playing of that, especially with the Shengye, the date of being effective will change that.
Which is what the yellow says.
Yes.
And this is for the council review of certain...
Right, and we need to remember, our primary mission is to reject them. Because if you don't do anything, 45 days later, it's in. So, what... The city attorney, words in yellow, we first received... Was first received by the council at a regularly scheduled meeting. At a regularly scheduled meeting of the city council, that's redundant, I'm gonna remove that. I don't know why that was, should've been removed.
I'm sorry, can you just clarify something you said for us, to make sure I understand? So you said, "Our primary duty as a council is to reject within the 45 days?" Or is it to...
Well, well, it's to affirm, but the reason there's 45 days there, if we do nothing, just to be clear, the appointment is done. Unless we first reject it. So if we put 60 days in, we're giving ourselves more time.
Right.
And in my mind, more time to reject.
And we're usually rejecting because that's the way the charter is created.
What we can't do is what like the senate does, where we just hold up an appointment indefinitely for years.
And to avoid that, if that's what...
So that's 45 days.
And the reason we said first received by a council was because when Barbara gets an appointment, she stamps it, and that's where the timing begins. So let's say there's no meeting in June. The day after a meeting, she gets an appointment. Now there's 30 days before it gets to the council. Then it's sent to committee. And that committee has to meet, or we have to schedule a special...
A meeting.
Meeting, if we want to reject somebody. And that can happen, it happened very seldom. So what this does is, if we got that appointment, the day after a meeting, it doesn't start the clock until it's sent to committee on the July meeting. Do you understand that? That make sense? So the primary change here is to give summer more time for us to evaluate.
That make sense?
But the other thing I said was, 45 days was changed from 30 in 2010 at that review. 45 days has been working fine. So, I don't see 60 as being necessary, myself. So that's where we were at. The, uh... The word presented should've said received here. This is an older version, and I don't know what I did wrong. Following the meeting at which the appointment was... That's what it should say. And I will make sure that the right version is sent to the full council. I don't know how to color, and this is in Google Docs.
Go over, see with a A, go on the line with that. Go across, go over, over, go to your right, the other way. Go, no, keep going, keep going, keep going, keep going.
Oh, here.
Right there.
That's color.
Yes, but you want highlight.
This is highlighted.
Okay, highlight, yeah.
Anyway, and the city attorney wanted to change must to shall, because that's that's common in all the charter, so he asked that be changed. So this is simple, and I'd like to send it to the full council for review. I make a motion to send Charter 210 as amended to the full council for review. Second. Any further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Alright. President Gomez, I'm going to set a public hearing for May 17th for these two things tomorrow.
Okay.
And I'm gonna put them into the email, so people get them. I'm gonna ask Barbara to put them on the website. And they'll be the clean versions.
Okay.
Um, I'll send to the full council both versions, the version of the edits, and then a version, the clean version. But on the website, they'll be posted, and then they'll be in the packet for the next meeting. Alright, the next thing we're gonna look at is this. I wish I could get rid of this. I don't... Do you know how to get rid of the review stuff in Google Docs?
Like, once it's been accepted?
Yeah, like when it's accepted. So go over to it.
Where?
Over, no, go down. Click on it, right there, see the check, Mark?
I have to do all of these?
Yeah, you have to do all of those, if you're approving them.
Well, yeah, I just... This, this, the version I have, the Microsoft Word version, I can get rid of all these. And Barbara's actually put up, done a clean draft. But if you look at her... This basically tells us what we've done. Now, all the pink lettering is the city attorney's request for language changes. And we had a meeting with him, Barbara and I, and these are all pretty much just language changes. So if I do this, will I get rid of this bar, this box?
What box?
Alright, I wanna move on, there's more.
There may be a lot of these.
Yeah.
No, I didn't think there was, but... Yeah, there is. Anyway, just so you know, yellow is my, is the original comments, pink... Oh, now they're gone! Ah! I'm gonna go back.
The other way, oh, that's forward, I think, or no, re... Oh, there it is, yeah.
Alright, so all the pink is his word, so he wanted to use mayoral occurs, he wanted to say, "Mayoral election, the office of the mayor shall be temporary filled on Thursday night." So just to review, this is about the first and third year. First and third year, as Barbara put it here, "A special election has to be held, city council president serves as mayor for the term." Okay? Any questions on this? Again, this is the city attorney's language. In the two months immediately prior, I had before, before... Previously, I used the word before, immediately prior to regular municipal change that. Okay? The way I'll explain this to the council is, number one, to fill, is to try to make it possible to fill a vacancy without having too many elections, number one. Number two, to make sure that president of the council is, and the role of the president of the council is fully defined in this charter. This one here, you just changed some language here, remember, we did this with the... Is filled, he took out the word vacancy. Is unable or unwilling to serve, remember, that's something we discussed. Um, "City shall elect by majority vote somebody in the council to fill the..." And remember why we said that, was because, please correct me if I'm wrong when I'm trying to remember all these things. Was because we wanted to make sure that maybe a president who has got a full-time job can't act as mayor. And that's the vice president serving, and he changed, again, the pink is his language. The second or fourth year... As acting mayor until the next regular municipal election. So, the beginning of the second mayor, mayor's term is in January of the second year. There's no special election. There's a municipal election at November, like this November. And we would elect a mayor, who would be sworn in immediately following the election. But the president of the council would be mayor for those nine months. Which confirms, back, as I recall, the original charter had nine months in there for that. Please interrupt me if I'm not recalling this correctly. I can take the... As provided for in Article 2, Section 211. You know, remembering the Billy Lynch vacancy, that's what Deborah put it to.
Right.
Moving on. He added this language, he really did a good job of adding clarifying language, using conjunction, can't put candidate for reelection. If you're the acting mayor. Just like our new appointments, the school committee cannot input candidate for reelection.
Right.
He changed will to shall here. Which is consistent with charter language. The word shall is used a lot. Okay, he changed that, something better. There's something I wanted to... Remember this here? Where it says you have to, Article 3, Section 31, says the mayor must not have another job, basically. But this would be, if you're the president of the council and you feel like you can do it, but you don't want to quit your other job, because you're not gonna run for reelection. Okay?
So that says you can have it?
This says, if you, under this assumption, shall not be subject to that. So you're not subject to that rule in the charter. You get it, Mark? So... I'm ready to move this forward, because I think the city attorney's approved it, the mayor's approved it. What do y'all think? You okay, Omar?
It makes sense.
We worked on it a long time. Uh, both of these, Barbara has already done legislative wording. The legislative wording is totally different than this. So when it goes to legislature, it says an act, you know? So I'll put that into the, give the counselors that too. When we vote on it, we vote on the charter changes as, as presented in legislative form. The reason is, that's what's going to them.
Right.
Fair. So, all set? I make a motion that we send to the full council, a new charter section, it's not an amended charter section, it's a new charter, Section 39.
Second.
Further discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
Sorry, you said it's a new...
Yes, I think as part of, I just laid a back that has to say, remove Section 39 and replace with, because 39 as it is now is for a two-year term. Good, Thomas?
But it's a new charter section, I just wanna make sure I...
It's 39, it's not a new charter section, it's new language for the entire charter. I guess you can use the word amend, I don't know, what the city attorney found there. Next thing is 5F. This is the rule. I've been thinking a lot about this, Omar. So, this is my ideas here, now let me explain. I went to, I think Connie went to, did you go to that open meeting thing that you asked?
Yeah, that's what I...
What they said, one of the things that the, the Supreme Court ruling, it's Falmouth or Barnes, or whatever it was, basically said is, you have to allow free speech, you have to allow criticism, you even have to allow hate speech, unless it's violent. But what they said you can do to maintain civility is to put procedures in place, in the rules, or whatever, whatever you have. These procedures allow the chair to go back to them, and to be specific about them. In other words, if we don't write them in, even though you've been following things pretty closely, like you changed the rule, the time to one minute, doesn't say you can't. If we put in that you can do that, nobody can question it. If you only have a minute, and somebody is being pretty negative, and it's only a minute. I've added the green language, because I think we should be specific, and I'd like to talk about it. This is in this one, this is his new language, I don't agree with the one on the bottom, Omar, it's too nonspecific.
Do what?
This is your second idea here? This one? Let me make this a little bigger, maybe?
Yes, please.
How do I get rid of these, I wish I knew. How do I make this bigger, Kenny? Oh, here, 125?
Well, I think part of the problem is, I don't know why... Yes, but it's also dark.
Is that that, or me, I don't think it's me.
Well, I think something on here got, the computer's screen got...
It's, yes, it's...
There's 150% now.
But that's, right, you can see that bigger.
Anyway, I don't agree with this, if you really want... This one is very, like, there's very little specificity in it. He sent us, Omar sent us two burdens of the new, of the comments.
Do you hear that?
So this is where I'm at right now. I wanted to make it one and three minutes, between one and three minutes, so that you have it in writing that you can do one minute.
Could anyone really express an important thought in one minute? I mean, I know that I'm...
We've done it, we've done one minute. If you have 100 people in the room, and you wanna do business... The other thing I put in, the chairman said a timeline before our public speak. I wrote not public hearings, but you know what I mean by that?
I mean, I'm okay with the chair may set time, I don't like it.
Well, we have a lot of business, and...
I know, I don't, I'm gonna tell you why I don't like it. When I run for office, I know that I run for office when there's no one in the public to participate, but I know that I run for office when it's 100 people, they wouldn't participate. I would take, when we have meetings, 35 minutes, but I wanted to take meetings that it would be four hours. And I... That really happens, but when that happened, I'm not open to allow that, because I think, I think it's important for most elected officials to listen to the public, and that's why, but that's me. We have, we have...
The word says may, you could, and it's up to...
And that's what I said, I like may, so it's up to, I'm probably, I would never use it.
Okay. I just remember, wasn't there a 90-minute timeframe set for, what was superintendent search the other day, and things like that? The other reason I think you should set a time limit, if you have 100 people in the room, is because 90% of the time, speakers are redundant, they're saying the same thing. I support what she said. And secondly, I don't do well after three hours of a meeting, when we're supposed to be making important decisions. So, that's just... But I hear that. The word may gives you the freedom to do it, if you don't do it, okay. What do you guys think of that? Um?
Yeah, I mean... I definitely think that, like, there's been... You know, I haven't presided over a lot of public hearings, but the one, when I was rules chair, we did the one about the Roe Act, right? And I remember finding myself feeling like I really needed to be a stickler about the time limit, because I felt like...
Well, the time limit per speaker, or the time limit for the whole thing?
Per speaker.
Well, that's still three minutes or less.
Yeah. Um, oh, so we're talking about...
The, like, setting the...
Public speak time...
45 minutes or one hour, or, instead of letting unlimited time.
Unlimited time.
Right. I mean, I, I think that there's, I don't know about necessarily, I do think that there is a point where we, as a council, might need to say, "Look, I understand that everyone's really upset about this, and we can talk about it next time, but there's a thing we really need to get to tonight," and this could go on all night. I do understand that there's, there are times for that, I think it's something that, um, is regrettable, and you want to avoid it, but...
Well, and the other thing that is available to the public, if you listen for an hour, you said it's an hour, you sent a lot of people to speak, and 90% of the time, they're just saying the same things over and over. I've heard all of you, you've said, you've said, pretty much, most of you have said similar things, please email us the remainder of your thoughts. But we need to move on, because we also have 10 public hearings. Now, public hearings, you really can't, that's why I put that in, you can't put a time limit on that. It's a public hearing about the budget, about something important, or ordinance.
Yeah, this is about public speak time.
Yeah, this is public comment. The thing I wanted to tell both of you is, I really struggled with this. It really bothers me that we can't do anything about hate speech. We can only, you can only gavel somebody who's threatening the counselor. But you can't gavel somebody who's making a anti-Porto Rican comment, or a homophobic comment, or something like that. And unfortunately, that's happened in the past, and certain counselors got very upset with it, but you can't do anything about it. And I looked it up today, because I wanted to see if there's a definition of hate speech we could go to, so you could say that's hate speech. But you can't, there's nothing. So if you have a minute, you know, you can, because things are getting heated in the room, I put this language in, that you can cancel public speak, because there's no law that says we have to have public comment. You can cancel it to maintain order. To calm things down. I thought that might be a good tool to have. I don't know, what do you guys think? What do you think, what do you think? She's typing the minutes. Too tomorbid.
You know, I, obviously I have a hard time with hate speech.
Well, we can't do anything about that.
We can't, obviously we can't do anything about it. You know, I think part of our role is to hear the community, and if they're fired up, and they have things to say, then I think that's part of being elected, that you give people the space to do those things. And I think, in that process, I think there can be healing, I think it can be a cathartic moment for people to be able to say, "You know what, I'm really angry and upset about this." As opposed to stewing about it, and...
Well, somebody's yelling, and then somebody else in the room is yelling at them, and there's a lot of this war, there's no civility. Can't that give you...
You can't do that.
Well, you can't, that's what I'm...
But the, but the, you're pointing, I do agree, Omar. Um, and like, like I said, part of the democracy is, if 200 people wanna tell me exactly the same, oh wow, tell me exactly the same, I'm okay with it. It's part of the democracy, right? And if they feel, if the, if the community feel that way, that we hear them, I'm okay with that. But that, again, that's me.
I think that what I've seen people do in the past is be like, okay, we're allowed to say whatever you want, but just so you know, like, if you just agree with the other person, you can just say you agree, you don't, you don't have to take the whole three minutes, like, you can, it is your right, but you don't have to, and we would really encourage you to, you know, I don't know.
Well, we were talking about it.
Yeah.
May cancel public speak to maintain order. I mean, when things get really out of hand, the one time you gavelled somebody, and the police had to order all the room, we didn't cancel public speak. Well, let's say that got really heated.
That wasn't during public speak, that was during a public hearing.
Yeah, it was...
No, it was public speak, we didn't have the ordinance in front of us yet.
Yeah, we did, it was the, but...
No, that was...
Pretty sure.
Yeah, no, that was...
I was thinking, you know...
It was Owen's ordinance.
Yeah, Owen's ordinance, but we haven't set, we haven't even done that.
Yeah, but we, yeah, we brought it up, we had two public hearings about it, and we sent it back to...
Oh, you're right, so we could, you can't cancel that, but... Alright, I don't know, maybe we don't need this language, I just thought, maybe if you had that capability. I think you can always, if people are disturbing the peace, there's a law against that. Disrupting a public meeting is a law against it.
Disrupting, but no, public speak, that they can talk.
No, I don't talk about talk disrupting. And yelling, and screaming, and...
That's different.
But we don't need it in the rules.
No, we don't need it in the rules.
So I'll just get that to...
I do think, and I'm just dropping on a lot of this...
We're meaning, well, we just started this, Tom.
Yeah. I think that there might be, I just, I'm just throwing this out in a big way, there might be some value in having in the rules some clarity about what people's options are, because I'm more likely to check the rules than to check mass general law, because there, it's just, you know, it, like...
But that would be a different rule, because this is just public, public comment. You're talking about if someone in the middle of the meeting starts talking, or starts screaming in the middle, so that, that...
That's disturbing a public...
Yeah, and that is, that is another, yeah.
We're just trying to...
Because this is about public comment, that's it.
Sure.
I mean, maybe we can add that to public comment, or, or maybe adding in this rule about...
Yeah.
I don't think you need a rule, you're the president.
I know, but I hear your point, you know...
But if somebody's disturbing a meeting, you could gavel them out at any time. Whether it's a public hearing or public comment, if they're really disturbing a meeting, screaming over somebody, like, you had to gavel that woman out of the room. That's what I'm talking about. But you have the right to do that now, you don't need a rule. Now, I decided to remove approximately three minutes here, because we're putting this in.
And between one to three minutes is okay.
Yeah. All remarks during the speech should be made to the council, not to an individual member. I think you should still say that, we don't have to tell them, they have the right. This is from the original language. Right? Because the original...
Well, you can't, that came from the lawyer, they can't do it to the...
You didn't eliminate it in your, this is your language.
Yeah, he can do it to the individual of the members.
I'm not saying that they can't do it, I'm saying you're gonna say, "Please address your comments to the full council."
I would say that, yeah.
And not to an individual member. So somebody comes up and says, "Dan Rist, I wanna tell you, you're wrong, etc., etc., you're an idiot," you can't gavel them quiet.
Yeah, but by rules, if, by rules, if you, if you read it like that, like this way, now you can go point or order by the rules.
Alright, so get rid of this then.
Yeah.
Alright, I mean...
When I say you, it's don't read, counsel or peek, I'm just, just for the public to know.
No, but that's a good point.
I say, don't forget they're just recording, okay?
Right. Comments made, let's zip, member.
Wait, so I'm not, I think I'm a little lost here.
Yeah, I'm confused.
So are we saying that...
Let's go back.
If I'm a member of the public, and I wanna come and talk about how much I think the President Gomez sucks, right? And I wanna just really unload about that.
And you can just look at me.
But can I say, hey, I'm, I have to say, I'm really disappointed with...
You can say, hey, Counselor Gomez, I'm just talking to you, that by rules, they're not allowed.
But is the lawyer now saying that...
The speech says you have... Speech says you have to allow it, so we can't have
So we have to cut it?
We have to cut it, that's what I just
Okay.
But comments made with specific members, speech should be allowed unless this constitutes a threat to commit a crime.
Yeah.
I put that, that was something you had in there as your chart?
I like it. Or whatever you want.
Well, let me say this, the reason we do rules is for any president and any chair, any committee, to have guidance.
Of course, yeah.
So if somebody's in a finance meeting and saying, you know, really threatening, uh, the mayor, I can say, you know, you have to shut up.
Yeah.
I'll call the police, I can shut them up because they're threatening the mayor. Whatever they want to say, but in this case, if we put it in the rules, I think I have stilted language here. The speech should be allowed unless it constitutes, oh, this is your language, unless it constitutes a threat to commit a crime, I guess that's okay. A slander, et cetera, is not enough, I don't think you have to put that in a rule, but you know that if somebody is slandering you, you have to allow it because it's free speech.
Yep.
Unless it's, you know, unless it can be proven to be detrimental to your business, like, certain things that just happen.
You can do it.
I did cut, I didn't want to cut this line, in order to avoid possible violation of open meeting laws, I think you should keep that. Why did you want to remove it?
Because everything did that I removed is came from the city's
No, you said consider, you didn't remove it, I removed dialogue regarding information on local events. I removed
Oh, okay, yeah, yeah, I see it, let me see.
We added that this language here, in order to avoid possible violations of open meeting laws, council shall not engage in dialogue regarding remarks made
Oh, I
I think that's
I, I, I'm gonna tell you, I why I remove it, thinking about future councils, they take public speak time to, to find a way to engage with, uh, public speak, that must type we're back and forward with it.
Well, why are we leaving, why don't, we're we have to leave it.
Just leave it, that's okay.
Okay, but you said remove it, I was, I'm confused.
I, I wanted to remove it to avoid that, but, but I'm okay with
No, I think it's important, because you say that all the time, when someone says we can't answer your question, because it's a violation of open meeting, and the rules too.
Yeah. That's fine.
And so that's basically it, there's not a lot of changes that, uh, any other thoughts, Omar?
What do you think, Omar?
This is what we're doing, what I have here is what we're gonna end up doing right here, I'll just rewrite it. Unless you guys want to have another meeting to confirm it. All remarks on this speech should be made to the council as a whole, period. You don't say anything about individuals. Somebody's wanna, I know somebody's gonna want to say, what about hate speech? When we debate this.
Yeah, they'll say
You have to say, look, I looked it up, I looked it up today in the Attorney General's office, yeah, you can't do anything about.
I'm okay with it.
Good? Threat to commit a crime. Okay, we're good on it? Should I put it forward tomorrow?
Okay, we're good.
I'll put it forward for the next, for the next
But tomorrow you will say, for this, you don't have to set it for the king, it's just
Right. I'm just gonna say, it'll be in the next pack.
Next package.
Okay? Alright, I move that we accept rule.
Yeah, because you want to give it opportunity to, to the council to review it.
Oh, yeah, yeah, we're not gonna, we're not gonna bring it forward tomorrow. I don't think that's fair.
May seventeen will
It'd be like, it'd be less than twenty-four hours.
Yeah, no, may seventeen will
I move that we accept rule five F, as amended.
Second.
Any further discussion, all in favor?
Aye.
Aye, aye. Okay. Finish this out. Somebody has something else, now, when we did this before, just so we're on the same page, Mayor Compensation Three One, we decided, I had written up language on the charter to pretty much codify what we did incremental salary increases, and Barbara made the great point, it's an ordinance, and the lawyer already approved it, so we decided to make no changes to Three One. I'm just reviewing that, because I'm gonna bring that up when we have the public hearing. Okay?
Does that need to be in the minutes where you just said?
No. I would. Well, okay, because I'm reviewing, we were originally given that as something to do, so, okay? Alright. Move we adjourn.
Want to skip over the
Second.
Uh, I'm gonna remove my motion. Mr. President, we have to do the anti-Semitic resolution in the rules, I was just curious.
He want to send it because, or console, want to send it to rules. He don't want us to vote tomorrow.
Okay. In your mind, does it need a long meeting?
No.
Then I might propose with our counselors to meet right before meeting.
Okay.
For who? I mean, do you say that? I'll read it over again, but it seems pretty straightforward. What do you think, can we have a meeting like right before meeting?
At the May seventeen, five thirty?
I might do that. Can you do that?
Five thirty?
Yeah. Meet right in chambers. I don't have any problem with just remand. Now, I'll ask Omar, do you really want to discuss this, because we don't, I just want
He, I, I called him.
He wants to discuss it?
Yeah, I called him.
So I should have a longer meeting, because he wants to bring it up?
I don't know, I would say like fifteen minutes will be enough, but it's up to you.
Well, I'll talk to him tomorrow, I'll get, if I can.
But he's, I talked to him.
Alright, good enough. Uh, motion to adjourn.
Second.
All in favor, aye. Turning off all recording.